The right way to address this situation would be to both vehicles, operability license, so forth, maybe number of vehicles. One of the biggest problems with the grass is you see as mine are where they are creating no problem for anybody who doesn't walk into the park.
Yeah, so, so could you give me more hours?
Yeah.
No, cause you don't go. Well, I can't help it though. You're absolutely right, you can't.
Should I look for another job?
Yes.
I don't know when that was, because I've been watching.
No, no, it's, it's an old business. I'm gonna promote some information forward.
Okay, well, here's what happened. I had a contract through.
But I have, I have two people in the office.
Kind of getting my site plan together.
One is relatively new. And the other one is, you know, my right arm.
A duty on the smallest parking and I might have to do something a little different.
So I gotta train up the other.
I've been kinda waiting for this to happen.
Okay.
Yep, cool. We'll see.
We'll see you everyone. I probably decided. If I can wave at night.
They're from the front. I think you're still. Not busy.
Are you waving?
Augusta, and I'm waving.
Okay.
It's blocking.
Well, no, she is.
Like, you know, nice lady, I see her. Uh, I normally pass her between Augusta.
And there's not that many cars like that.
No, but I pass her between Augusta and Moss Creek if we're both on time.
Okay. Is she going that way?
Yeah, she's going, she's coming out this way, you know what? Normally ride around the high school, you know, give or take a little of the high school at Augusta. I see her, I'm a little, uh, late, I can't move further. But I wait, I don't know, I don't know.
There was, there was.
But I pay attention to an hour, just like, I can't even get it with you, or your husband, you know?
Right, right, right.
No, he's got a Honda.
But we had, when, when we bought that one in.
That's an authority case on spec.
Eighteen, yeah, two thousand eighteen, when we bought that car. There wasn't a lot of them, but I saw one that had, really cool, had babies on it. So like white babies.
Kind of like your old style to have yellow bugs, white.
Yeah, yeah, but they had like just right in the, in the front quarter panel, just like maybe three babies.
Um, I seen this in the office, it was on, okay.
That was Strasburgs.
Yep.
After, nice to mention that too, when I got that off, I didn't have any of the chargers.
Yeah, you got to guess it out.
I think there's one that Ben has, it's supposed to.
I was thinking of one sharp, I'll get another word.
But Ryan said he had chargers at home to goodbye for now. So.
The new guy, but the old guy's having, had a deteriorated rate there.
The what?
Said I should launch the new board members by having the old guy, remember tapping them.
Question for you. How many loads did it take to get the tree over to wherever you put it? Cause I have to bring it back.
I can't on trailer.
Like, it's that way.
No, are you? We just, we got a, we just.
Because I have to tape all the bulbs, and I have to zip tie onto the cleanery before we put it out.
Are you, is somebody gonna try and log James?
James is gonna come.
James right there?
I know, but is he gonna look at the teams? Hey, you guys stay apart. If you're far apart, there's no scrolling things either.
Hi, D R Carlson, I'm from C L A. Audit guy.
We're gonna hear from you.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah. I love competing with Matt.
Yeah, that's why you should look.
It's one of my favorite past.
You picked a good seat then.
I sat here so I could hear Renee the best.
I didn't shake your, my man. That's Karen C, or Karen Strasser.
They worked, they worked well.
Recording in progress.
Yep.
Are you Ryan?
Yeah, Matt, how are you? What do you mean?
One other time.
You guys dress alike, you knew each other already.
They called, they called outfits.
Yeah.
He just left again. Yeah, I saw your face anyway, so.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
I got this from my daughter, she works in Hy-Vee. Here, Mom, you want a shirt? So it's ham on it.
Good, how are you?
Oh, good.
Let's go.
Oh, okay.
So I got a question, did you or her uncle make a deal?
No, I did, yeah, I never did at all. I thought it worked with just, like, it is all trucks, but you have to have top. Are you guys still kind of on schedule? When you take your leave, I'm actually doing them, or?
Yeah, we're pretty consistent, it's a lot of times just kind of certain reports to get into the state. Yes, so it's like you have to go first.
Just starting to breathe.
Step process before you get into the audit.
Theirself.
So he was actually ahead of schedule, so, yeah.
I don't know.
Other ones.
How terrible.
Maybe it was their name, she thought April.
Supposed to be August. It might actually, Ben, there's a few things I just had to wait on, I was like, well, let's just wait until our review looks at it, so I'm sure it remembers, instead of something changing and reporting on it, I was like, well, months later.
You don't have to sign it.
Still may, but, no.
No.
Yeah, shut the burner off too.
Yeah, no doubt.
Don't wait it. Don't forget the board. Oh, right at six o'clock? Mine gives me fifteen minutes, and that's it.
Okay, Renee's coming, so we'll just wait a minute or so. Do you know if she was grabbing something?
She was in the restroom, I think.
Issue, okay.
Tim, is that a Charlie Barren shirt?
Yeah. It's North Dakota. It's Iowa. Oh, I took the wore this today.
That's why I was confused.
Yeah. They made a fundraiser for when they had the direct call, and so my headquarters at work was right, right where I went to.
And Marion used to work there.
I watched a lot of his videos before I decided I was coming to Wisconsin, I thought he was hilarious beforehand, after I was like.
Charlie Barren?
Cause I thought it was funny from before, it's like, yeah, it was, you know, funny.
No, it's real.
But that's just it, I'm like, oh, this is so much better.
Yeah.
Context makes him so much funnier.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, I don't know, it was an expensive shirt, but most of the money, all the money went to. Yeah. Okay, um, what is that? Oh, you're doing things. Call the meeting to order, the regular board meeting, come eight, nine, sixteen AM, we'll start with a roll call.
Ailesworth.
Here.
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Hurd.
Yes.
Cott.
Here.
Matoon.
Here.
Rapp.
Here. All right, we have the quorum, and we're on to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to number four, the agenda, certify open meeting law requirements of the met.
A notice of the meeting and the agenda was posted at the three public places, and the newspapers were notified.
All right, thank you for that. Number five is to adopt agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, any comments, questions on the agenda? Uh, see none, all in favor of adopting agenda, has written, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Right, aye, number six, recognition of visitors or citizens input, so this is anybody from the community that wants to speak, anybody from the board that would like to speak as a citizen, this would be the time to do that. Yes, Mr. Zeeman, if you can say your name and give.
Five or three, State Street?
I think so.
I was in the nominee today, I picked up a couple booklets from their recreation department. I'll be amazingly brief actually tonight, so don't despair. What I have noted though, with a paper clip, I've got two copies of this, one for the president and then one for anybody on the committee, they have fees for all their pavilions, et cetera, at their various parks. And on the bottom of the fee schedule, they have asterisk, for profit or private individual users, tax will be added to the above totals, nonprofit or tax exempt organizations with a tax ID number or letter will be exempt. Now, the reason I brought this to you, not necessarily for you to do anything, but for something to think about, we have this, this, in my opinion, insane habit of giving everything away in Fall Creek, and then when after thirty, forty years, the parking lot might need some renovation, we say, well, we don't have any money. I, I think you, you've done a honorable job fixing it up now, but I, I think we might ponder why it is we don't have any money, and maybe it's because we give everything away, we do it for the Lions, fire department, many organizations, and I realize it's a great feather in many of, for example, Lions Club members' hats, that they were able to convince the board some years ago to, to make them exempt, or every time they come for a waiver of fees, they, they get it. Now, somewhat parenthetically, back in nineteen eighty-one, I happened to be village president, Lions Club president, and tug of war chairman, and at that time, they also had the same policy. But in those coincidental arrangement of, of jobs, I was able to start paying rent, which I thought made us honest people, and indeed a service club rather than a beggar of fees, but, or a beggar of exemption from fees, so. Anyway, the object is not necessarily, you don't have to do anything, don't have to do it now, but please bear it in mind, everything costs you something, and it does not have to be free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard. I thought you were gonna say you were tug of war champion, but.
Just a captain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
Charles Kane, two ninety-seven Jackson Avenue, uh, four months ago, I believe it was, I'm not sure, I may have, I attended a meeting here, it was granted a variance, I forget the zoning ordinance number now, regarding cars parked out on a hard surface. And it was my understanding at the time that that ordinance is going to be revisited with a possible eye toward making it a little bit more reasonable, a little bit more flexible, perhaps, maybe going to such a thing as so many cars allowed and where they're allowed to be, rather than say right out by the sidewalk or whatever. Uh, we're down to two months now, and I haven't seen anything on any of the, uh, the meeting notes, or meeting notes that say it's been in any way addressed, and I'm planning to build a garage now, and I, I need some kind of closure on this to help with my site plan. My own opinion is that this is probably the wrong way to approach any problem that there might be with vehicles all over the place, I think we already have an ordinance in place regarding number of vehicles and certainly their condition and operability, and whether they're licensed or not. I, I fail to see any logical reason why vehicles should have to, or one or two vehicles, really any, should have to be parked on a hard surface, other than maybe dragging some dirt out into the street, that might have been a concern originally, but it certainly isn't at my house, probably not a lot of others either. So I'm hoping that, and I realize it's not on the agenda for tonight, but we've got two more meetings where this needs to be addressed, and if there's no softening of that ordinance, if it's gonna remain as is, or if it is softened, how so, all those things could affect my site plan, which needs to be solidified real soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the floor, or anybody from the board that wants to add anything as a citizen? Okay, thanks gentlemen for that, then we'll move on to number seven, approval of the minutes. So, I think most everybody's familiar with, uh, that had Ryan Chester, seeing everything going okay with you, there's a little number seven on there, and six, yeah.
Your first.
Very good. Yep. So we'll just be looking for whenever you.
Make a motion, that we approve the minutes. Second.
Motion and second, any further comments, questions on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Okay, great. Number eight, financial report, Renee, do you have a preference in order, or do you wanna do yours first then?
It's okay, I'll do mine, because he'll talk a long time.
I'll try not to.
Uh, so, I put one on the packet on Friday, but then I emailed you today telling you that I had gotten the chase bill entered, and so I updated the financial as well, so the one that you're looking at now should have color coding on it.
Eight, eight.
Eight, the first part of eight. And so just a few items to point out, in April, we got the transportation aids, we got one half of the year for the police school liaison officer, and we got the quarterly ambulance recovery charge, and then of course in April, in expenses, the board payroll went out. And then turning on to page three, you'll see a large expense for the police administration alternating expense, those are computers, and Colin got a grant for that, so it will actually net to zero after the grant money comes in, and then we paid the quarterly fire protection service, and those are the only items that were noteworthy.
Great.
What is the ambulance recovery charge? That didn't exist before.
Um, they, do you want to? Go for it.
The three hospitals had an agreement where they paid, you know, whatever it was to various providers, and at some point, the hospitals decided they were no longer going to do that. So now we get to contract with, um, Eau Claire, and there's a fairly standard rate that all municipalities that are privileged to contract with Eau Claire Fire get to pay, based on per capita, how many people live in the village, honestly, based on service, but it's a rate per capita. It goes up every year. It started out at a relatively min, uh, small amount, and it's a ten-year contract, and it goes up every, every year.
I'm aware of all that.
And it goes up substantially. So that, you'll see two things, if you look at the budget fairly, there's a portion in there for levy limit for expenditure restraint that we have, and then there's an actual charge that is being charged depending on the year, but it is going up significantly.
Yeah, but, so what I'm asking is, what's the recover, why is it labeled recovery charge?
When they get paid, when, if somebody uses the ambulance and then Eau Claire gets paid, we get part of that.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, I was, I was.
And it's not just, and it's not necessarily if they get paid, it's if they get paid on a, a state highway, correct?
I'm not positive.
I don't, I don't think we get all the recovery, I don't think it's that billable, so Wisconsin legislature just passed, um, amendment this last session that will allow their billable rates to go up for recovery charges, for what's Medicare, Medicaid billable. I don't necessarily know if that's actually gonna affect us positively, it'll affect Eau Claire positively, but I'm not sure it's actually gonna make a difference.
I just, I just didn't recall seeing that as a, an income before, so, thank you.
Thanks for that, anybody else have any questions or comments on the budget comparison? All right, we're about, we'll go on to, we'll call votes.
You need a motion?
Motion to prove.
It's okay.
Let's go ahead with that first, yeah.
Matt, you did?
Yeah, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to prove the budget comparison. Now, we can do a roll call unless there's.
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Hurd.
Yes.
Cott.
Yes.
Matoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Ailesworth.
Yes.
Okay, the next portion of the financial report, be the audit report. Dan here, can I present the audit, well, report, I guess.
Sir.
Sir.
Hopefully you'll see that it's pages five to ninety-five, that's for the budget comparison.
Yeah, um, we came in February, stayed maybe for like four days, did the audit on site, went really well, as far as getting the answers we needed, and quickly back, so I think it went pretty well this year. It's, the audit report itself is like, well, seventy-seven pages long, so the summary that I'm gonna go over is only three, so it's gonna summarize is how the financials are in the main funds and some different points, so I'm just gonna go over that as far as like the different item numbers. So item number one there, the village got what is called like an unmodified opinion, so it's a clean opinion, it's the highest level of opinion you can get from an independent audit firm, so that's, that's good. And there, after that, I wanted to note some comments that are pretty typical with other municipalities and the size of a municipality, as far as, we, that first one relates to like our audit firm, how it's prepared the financial statements and notes for the village, so that's that first one. The second one is we make, you know, annual adjustments to the books just to get it on the right basis for accounting for the audit report. And the third one just being, since you're such a, well, it's a smaller village, so your office staff is small, so we just have a comment in there about a lack of segregation of duties, but like I said, all three of those comments are almost in every one of our letters that we have to the municipalities, so it's not a big deal, there's something we have to disclose. And two, if you have questions to go through, just let me know, and we can stop and ask questions too, but, number two there, this is, uh, labels some things, we also assist with the village with the P S C report, the annual Form C report that's due to the state, and then there's an annual T I D report too that's due to the state, so I just wanted to list those, there's other items that C L A helps with during the year. That third item, the general fund, this is the general operating fund of the village, and but first part there, it goes over a balance sheet summary, it's like a, a line by line item, and then comparison over the last four years, it's just a good analysis to be able to see if anything's really changed a lot from year to year. But, I mean, I wasn't really gonna go over a whole lot here just because specific items really haven't changed a whole lot, I mean, significant enough to talk about them, I guess. If you look down towards the bottom of that page, it's, it's kind of the net income line, so like the five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, so that's the, really the net income of the general fund, and the goal of the general fund really is to break even from year to year, you wanna spend what you receive in revenues, so if you take a look at that over the last four years, I mean, there's just a small positive, positive amount, so the general fund's doing what it, what should be doing, so it's a good thing. Those last ratios on the bottom there, we compare the fund balance, they're graded out, I don't know if you can see that on your, your screen, but there's gray line items, we take that unassigned fund balance at three hundred and twenty-one thousand, and we say, well, this is actually fund balance that can be used, you know, in the future, we compare that to the expenditure, so really, that fifty-one percent really means that you have enough fund balance to cover half a year of expenditures in two thousand twenty-two. So it's something that we keep, keep track of over time, and it's pretty consistent if you look at the last four years, as far as where the balance is at, and then looking at how much of the expenditures it would cover the next year.
And is that adequate?
It's actually high, usually you're looking at like a thirty-three percent is typically what we see.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's better than being the other way.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to be aware.
When you say, uh, general fund expenditures, that's, that's not any capital projects or anything like that?
No, no, it's your basic general government expenditures that you have, that you'd have every year, the different, um, public works, but it's just the typical year-end expenditures that you have that you budget for in that fund.
So we're in quite a bit better shape than some other.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. What we see.
In the general fund.
In the general fund, yeah.
Year to year, we're balancing, you know, it's worth five thousand dollars difference, but we've only been at forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-third, forty-four, forty-five, forty-seven, they're, you know, we're fairly consistent, what that does mean is that there's been sort of less built up in there for, from thirty-three to forty-seven, that's we've been holding on to as opposed to spending.
Right.
Right, yeah, it's been consistent over the last four years. The next area is that item number four, the special revenue funds, they're the library fund, lake district fund, and the garbage fund are the, the three that are active right now, and the garbage fund, it's only, it's the second year that it's started, when you start offering that service internally. And I wasn't really gonna go over a whole lot here, the fund balances are consistent with last year, and that's what I expected to when we started with the audit, so there's nothing really, I wasn't gonna go over much with those three funds, they're smaller, and they're just a separate fund reporting. Debt service, that's used to account for, just like it says there, accumulation of resources for payment of debt, and typically you'll see that balance pretty close to zero too, because everything that you're taking in with the tax levy gets paid out, uh, for debt payments, principal and interest payments. Last couple years has been a little bit of a carryover to the next year, but then it balances out the next year, so it's just things where maybe you budgeted something originally, but maybe the payments came in a little different than what you anticipated or didn't expect, but those are small carryover amounts for twenty twenty-one and twenty, so it's not concerning at all to me.
And what generally happens with the carryover, do you just, you usually apply them to the loan principal?
I think that's what Renee, you've done that in the past, yeah, it's something you consider for the next year, so the levy would, yeah. So it catches up.
Yeah.
Number six, the capital projects funds, there's five that are active right now, I use the list there, the first one being like the regular village capital projects fund, you'll see it actually went up quite a bit from last year, went from three hundred thousand up to a million, and that really relates to the, the villages portion of the world development project, the street portion that was done, um, with those grant and loan funds, because there was utility work done as well as the governmental fund, so, the project ended in two thousand twenty-one, so you see all the, the costs for the government came on the books then in twenty twenty-one, so that's why the fund balance increased so much, and that'll relate to some of the things like over in the utilities too that changed from last year, it might probably make more sense when I talk about the utility piece of it. But really, that's the only fund that changed a whole lot, I mean, otherwise it's consistent, uh, T I D two, the police fund, equipment fund, and the T I D one, they really didn't change a whole lot, the fund balance from last year. As far as T I D one, the expenditure period ended in two thousand eighteen, and then it's scheduled to be closed in two thousand and twenty-three, so the only thing that can be accumulated in there now are like administrative costs, like the annual fee that you have to pay to the state to keep the T I D open. T I D number two, uh, had been increasing over time, but this last year it's pretty consistent, it's just, you bring in the tax revenues with the T I D income, and it really depends on the year what you're expending the T I D expenditures on, so, I mean, you still have till two thousand twenty-eight to expend for the T I D, T I D number two, so it's nothing that's immediate, but the balance stayed pretty consistent with last year, as far as the fund balance. So I wanna switch over to the utilities, so the first one being the water utility, that first summary there is gonna be like a balance sheet summary comparing the light items the last four years, the, the line I wanted to talk about was the other current asset line, it's the second line down, it went down from three hundred and fourteen thousand to twenty-four thousand, and what happened with that R D project is the costs, the general fund costs for accumulating in that account, so now they got transferred out in two thousand twenty-one, so.
Number seven.
Oh, number seven, sorry, yeah. If I'm going too fast, it's hard to tell where.
Six to ninety-five.
Yeah.
I'll get that on here.
Look for, it'll see a seven, and it says enterprise funds.
Sewer utility.
R I S used to look at this stuff, so it's like, I'll just slow down a little bit, but. So you have that other current assets line for the water utility, so, this kind of I talked about earlier with the capital projects fund, is those costs, those governmental, the villages' costs, the street costs are transferred over to the capital projects fund, so that's why that went down to what you would see normally, down to the twenty-four thousand. The other items there are consistent with previous years or last year. I wanna note that change in net position at the bottom, that two hundred, the negative. I wanna note that change in net position at the bottom, that two hundred, the negative, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that also relates to that capital projects, it's just a transfer out to the government funds. It's something that's kind of a anomaly as far as a one-time transfer. And so like going in future years, it'll look more like how it had been in the past, the positive amount. And it actually been pretty high in the last two years too, because you received some grant funding from the world development fund. And that's why your change in net position was higher those two years. So without that transfer to the capital projects fund, you'd have been around like forty-eight thousand dollars to the good in the water utility if you would take, pull that out. But otherwise, the trends there, those ratios are all looking good. I mean, cash is up. The current ratio, it's over one, it's been consistent. And then, yeah, I mean, and you've had positives in your net, change in net position over the last however many years. So I think the water utility is, it looks pretty good when I can see as far as the indicators.
What is the current ratio?
That's with the, the current long, the current assets over the current liabilities.
Okay.
Yep. Sewer utility is pretty similar as far as the water utility goes, because you'll see that same item, that other current asset count went down. And that's that same thing, same way I explained it.
Other current assets?
Yeah, we see that three twenty-eight thousand from down to thirty-six thousand. So yeah, those general fund costs were just accumulating until the project was finished. It was more of just an accounting thing, but we actually had to transfer it over to the capital projects fund this year. And that explains that negative change in net position there at two sixty-six, same thing.
Right.
One-time deal. So it would have been, without that sewer utility would have gone from around eight thousand dollars to the good as far as the net income for the sewer utility. Cash is up there too, current ratio is good. So again, both utilities are, are pretty similar in how, how they're looking in as far as the rates being able to pay for the expenses so far in the current time anyway. The last piece there, number eight, is a summary of the debt or long-term obligations. It's pretty simple to go over this year, because you can see everything just went down. I mean, it's your normal principal and interest payments on the loans, no new debt in two thousand twenty-one. So you'll see there went down, like the totals went down from five point six million down to five point two million. Those last four lines are a statutory summary, so you're, you're only able to take out so much GEO debt. Compare like your, your equalized valuation of your village. So there you're capped at like five point three million dollars for GEO debt. But you're only at three point four right now. So that percentage, that sixty-four percentage is saying you're, you've only used sixty-four percent of your, your limit for the general obligation debt. So it's good to just keep track of that too over time to see how the debt's comparing to the valuation. But it's, it's actually went down somewhat from the previous year, because the, there was this debt getting paid off in two thousand twenty-one, there was nothing new. So that's all I had, I didn't know if there was any specific questions. I know it's kinda fast and furious, but I don't wanna keep you guys too long either.
Are we subsidizing either one of the utilities with one of the other funds? Or are they cash flowing on their own?
What I'm seeing, it's, it's on its own, it's standing alone, yeah, which is how it's supposed to be.
The water fund's net position is cash flowing a lot closer, so you see the cash that's sitting in there. It's sitting in, cash in it. Our year to year, we didn't think that much this year, that's sitting in the cash fund in the water fund. Our water fund is a lot, our water fund is right on the brink of cash flowing, our sewer fund is doing better. But our water fund as far as overseeing the cash and commercial expenses here is pretty close. We've got some money in the one.
We're cash light on the water.
Yeah, but we're, our sewer rates are better than our water rates as far as where we see sustainability. Which is funny, the sewer rates, it runs up historically, but when we finance that debt, it helps to make the company in the sewer.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else for Dan, or just a few minutes if you want?
Renee has my contact, Jared has my contact information if you have any further questions as you're reviewing the report or the summary too. Just let me know.
When we talked, there was some question or comment you made about they wanna see you saving so much in the utility funds. They may hear that if, for future expenses. Is that somewhere in here, how, how will you score against that, do you remember?
Yeah, we test compliance if there's certain loans that have certain requirements and get that fund set aside like for debt or future capital equipment purchases. I think I just recently, Renee, I don't know if you got that, as far as covering that. Rural development requires a fund to be started, that's, a month gets transferred in every year. And that's, I think, a board, a board decision actually at how much you wanna set aside for future capital outlay in those. So it's nothing that, that I saw that there's actually a dollar amount necessarily, it's just something that, it's an internal decision.
We have to put a certain amount in the water and sewer, so we have a fund that sits in place for sewers. We don't actually have to put anything in sewer, but our water, the loan does specify the amount we have to put in. So there is a dollar, it's miniscule, and there is a dollar amount in our.
Yeah, it's smaller.
Yeah, in our contract documents that say we need to put in a thousand dollars, I don't remember what it is, but it's not a.
So we always check that coming in with the audit, we just read the document, especially on a loan, and then we just keep track of where you're sitting as far as the certain funds that you're setting up. And the payments you're making in there. But I remember talking to you about that.
Yeah, I just wanna recall what that was.
Yeah.
Back to the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah.
And the general fund expenditures. And your comment about we're, we're in pretty good shape there. Should we be driving that closer to the thirty-three percent? Or are we better to, are we better to be sitting at the fifty-one percent?
It's somewhat of an internal decision, I've seen it all over the board. Thirty-three is like the earmark that I've seen.
Okay.
That's just from other municipalities that we audit and information that we do from around Northwest Wisconsin, thirty-three. But truly, I think it'd have to be internal if you did wanna spin some of that down.
Right.
To get that fund balance down. But I mean, it could be something too that would be unexpected, I suppose. Then you'd adopt a budget change. Maybe that's why in the past it really hasn't, I mean, as you, the four, last four years, they've been all smaller positives. So it tells me that you budgeted very well as far as what you expected and what actually happened.
I think maybe another question, and, and this is very ambiguous and you don't have to answer it. I'll try and qualify this and I'm simply doing it out of ignorance. And yes, I, I know sometimes we get nicked if we, nicked for a loan or nick, you know, nicked by the state or, or whatever. If we have too much, I, I just, so I guess I'm asking, where's the best place for that to be? If the fifty-one percent is fine, I'm totally fine. But, and I, like I said, it's an ambiguous question. But let's say we looked, looked to do something else and we wanted to get public money, or I mean, like state money or something like that. If, if our general fund is sitting there, could we get, could we get nicked?
So that you wouldn't be, so they're saying, well, you don't really need the funding.
Right, if the earmark, if the earmark for almost everybody else is thirty-three percent and we're up at fifty.
My guess is, Matt, that him being the auditor, he's not the right person to ask. He probably don't really, I mean, he took, he looked at your books, gave you the numbers back of where you're at. Probably doesn't wanna make recommendations of what he told us where he sees other people, but we should probably, if we're concerned about that, we should look down some other avenues of, okay.
Yeah, let's look into that.
Can I tell you about the difference of what we would do?
Yeah.
So, but that is what's sitting in the general fund.
Yeah.
If you wanted to drive that down closer to the thirty-three percent, what we would do, we actually have a resolution in place right now that says any excess revenue over expenditure, we're putting into capital projects or CER.
So we could just transfer that?
Yeah, so it's been a, it's been a decision that that's the amount of money they wanted to hold. But if you, if you didn't wanna leave it there, if you wanted to see a thirty-three percent or a forty percent, we actually have a resolution that said that we are going to have X percentage of our budget sitting in cash available on hand. But if we wanted to bring that down, we would transfer that into CER, CEA, you know, we put it into one of our other funds. That wouldn't necessarily help with the concern about, do we have too much money in the bank when we're seeking fund?
Right, right.
But it would lower the percentage that we would see in the general fund. So we, I mean, we could drop that tomorrow by putting a resolution and transferring it to.
But if it doesn't matter, then I don't care.
Well, it might matter.
That's the ambiguity of the question.
Are you better off to save for it and have money when you need it?
Well, yes.
Or to.
Absolutely, for, and go before funding agencies saying they don't have any money since getting rid. I just thought I'd ask, 'cause he's here.
Any advice?
Yeah, I mean. I've seen both, to be honest. I mean, I've seen, because it's really internally and how you wanna, just like Jared said, I mean, those kind of are your two options.
Right.
But more often I see the conservative approach, keeping more fund balance.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's what I see more often.
Which would be more like where we're at?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, basically than other, yeah, other municipalities of your size in this area.
Go ahead.
It's more of a conservative approach.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hope I wasn't too rough.
No, no, I get what you're saying, yeah, but it's an internal decision, but yeah, that's kinda what I've been seeing anyway.
Good.
Anybody else have any questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a good rest of your meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't believe he wants to leave. Just get into the good stuff.
I know.
You don't wanna stay for the whole meeting?
Maybe next time.
Yeah, hey, man, just so you know, everybody wanted you at the end, but I found a place.
Oh, one more, yeah.
I would've enjoyed it maybe next year.
Right, safe.
Okay, on to the number nine, on your approval of bills.
So I highlighted a few of the ones that are not the regular monthly bills. You'll see the city of Eau Claire, that is their yearly bill for their computer software for the squad. And then we paid an interim bill for Dan coming for the auditor. And you'll see our, and our waste systems, they do this, they were jetting sewers, cleaning the lift stations. It's kinda like annually, isn't it, Jared?
Yeah, we shoot ten percent of the system per our CMO.
And those were the only ones that I was, that was, you know, non-standard bills.
I have a question about the bond, rooting and NIX, um, the attorney fee.
Yes.
For legal, her residential zoning request, what was that?
So the attorney fee for that, we had a couple of series of meetings on the rezone on the property over there. There was some differing of opinion of what ordinance meant, about whether or not a process was required or not required. A board member reached out to the league for some free advice that did not come. However, if we were to meet our statutory deadlines, I was told that I was not reading the ordinance correctly and that my interpretation wasn't correct. And that we needed to, I get confirmation on that. I've been trying to make sure that we hit those statutory deadlines without, without being an error. He, or I consulted with Garrett Nix on what the needed process was to make sure we hit those deadlines. And that's the duty of paying an attorney.
Which property are you referring to? That's research and, that's research and an email server we buy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to pay the bills.
Um, got a motion?
I think Ryan asked what property.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay. Um, sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay.
No worries.
What, what does it say property in?
I, I don't remember the address, but it's Karen's.
Is it moot?
Karen Hertz.
One, four South State Street.
Four South State, sorry.
Michael.
I don't remember the address off the top of my head, but it was that. We've been a series of rezoning slash conditional use permits the last couple of months on that parcel.
Or request or application or whatever.
Yeah.
I think there was a version of this bill before, I think we have a motion.
Right.
I don't think we got a second yet, but continue. Did, did you change it in much, because there was a bunch of ACHs and IRS things and they're not here now or.
Well, you're right, some of the ACHs are not there, which I still don't know if I quite print this report the right way, but I'm trying.
There's two at the bottom.
But there are two at the bottom. But the part that I added, you're gonna see the nine-nine-zero-four-eight to the nine-nine-zero-six-two, I got the chase bill recorded, so those are the, the chase. And then you'll see right above those nine-nines, you're gonna see the two-six-five-oh-one. That's the, from the common checking account paying chase, so you remember the nine-nines is the detail of the chase and then that's actually paying chase. So why the other ones don't show up, I don't know. I can try to find out from course. I, I still have it, you know, if that helps you, I have the one that was printed before.
This is the only one I saw.
Yeah, 'cause there was these, it says internal revenue service, like a sixty-two-hundred and then a health tradition. So things that are for like, our payroll stuff is showing up and then.
I'll have to check with them.
What's the total on the bottom of one?
Well, which one?
Yes.
There's retirement system, those are.
No, no, the total is bottom of the, look at some.
Fifty-three-two-two-three-ninety-nine.
And this one that I have is fifty thousand, seven forty, thirty-five cents.
Can I see that for a second? Can we circle back, 'cause I wanna find the answer to this before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, let me play on this for a minute, so I'll see if I can find what proportions printed and which of these is the actual.
Well, I know one time I did invoice Dave, one time I did pay my date.
So you're gonna multiply that or I'll be a quick one?
I'll give a quick one and then I'll come back to this while we're moving on to the next one, if that's all right.
Okay. So we're gonna come back to number nine.
There's so many multiple ways to print that report that I'd probably choose the correct parameters.
Would it just be easier for me to retract?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, can you resend your motion?
I'll resend my motion now and then we'll, we'll deal with it when we get the right number.
Okay, we'll come back to number nine. We've got a little clarity on what that is.
But if he's looking for the number and his report's next.
I'll get my report now.
So number ten, report on village administrator, like that pushed out, you should see it there.
I'll be fast on a couple of things. We put out a request for a proposal on consulting engineer. I've had multiple firms reach out to this, I think we'll probably get a decent response to this. I've had a couple of different ones that have come in and met with me in the office. I think there's, we talked about differing relations and, you know, how you would envision different processes, typical billing percentages for large projects versus hourly rates and things for smaller projects. Those were, the hope is to have that through a committee that I would like to, to appoint at the end of this meeting for review to the entire board next month. That's the, the way the deadlines were set back on that. So hopefully we'll have a group come together and make a recommendation on which attorney we would like, or which engineering firm we would like to move forward. I would hope that, and this is for a chance, but I would hope that we would have, you know, maybe the three board members, myself and another employee or a community member. But that we could work on evaluating either Renee or Jamie or somebody from the public works. that we could work on evaluating either Renee or Jamie or somebody from the Public Works, um, one or the other, it doesn't necessarily need to be both. But if we could have a, maybe a group of five or seven, or we could have people look at it and take a little bit more time and look at the proposals, um, and then make a made recommendation, but that's, that's entirely up to you. The last, uh, month we had, um.
Can I ask a question about that before we go on? You met with a couple?
Mm-hmm.
Here?
Yep.
Um, just, uh, a sideline question, did any of them have any interest in looking at sewer planters?
No.
Okay.
No, nobody wanted to talk infrastructure, everybody wanted to talk, uh, big picture, what are you, um.
Okay.
What do you envision in a relationship with a consulting engineer? What types of things would you anticipate? Uh, how would you anticipate, um, a work order, uh, you know, if, if you have a project and, you know, is that a phone call? Or are you gonna wanna see a, uh, work slip? Do you envision a global, uh, work agreement? We should kind of look back and forth on some of those things, but I think we, um, I've learned in every municipality is kind of what I think works really well. We've seen some ex, previous examples of things that we thought didn't work very well, that came back to bite us, um, and a few things that we hope to have different moving forward. But they'll all have proposals, there was a, it's on the website right now if you wanna see the request for proposal.
Okay.
Um, but it, it's all out there currently.
Thank you.
Sorry, uh, the other thing that I wanted to report on, last, uh, month, we had a gentleman come and talk about the, uh, storm sewer at the su, uh, cemetery. Concerned about whether or not the pipe had any integrity, there'd been a, a break there in the past, um, and there was a statement about, you know, our people concerned to be buried near there, don't know where they're gonna end up. Um, we do have a right of way through there and we did need to, uh, check, I mean, we did have a break there a couple of years ago, so they're not a hundred percent wrong in, in being concerned about that. Uh, we had a manhole underneath the sidewalk there on, uh, that we popped and while R and R was here scammering and cleaning the sewer lines, we had him go run that, uh, storm sewer. And all, I mean, we've got the video, anybody wants to come look at it, but he's more than welcome to, um, but the, the concrete pipe looks like it's in pretty good shape overall. There is a little bit of spalding on the top of the, uh, concrete pipe, which is.
The exposed part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the top, you were a little condensating, uh, freeze, uh, during the winter, but honestly, it's fairly minor spalding, would you say, Jamie? I mean, that's there, but it's not, it's not, I mean, it's not.
Yeah, and there's not, no major integrity.
Yeah, not any major, but there is, you know, some, there is some minor, uh, spalding in it, but along all that, uh, pipe looked like it was in pretty good shape. I think we can confidently tell the cemetery board that, uh, we've done our due diligence, we've run a camera and the, uh, pipe looks like it's in good shape, um.
So Jared, did you tell R and R's every municipal?
I have not, I, I didn't know if, uh, we would like to have that go through the, uh, board, I figured I'd report on it, whether Tim or, uh, the chair would like to report that back.
I think she should.
Um, I can do it either way, R and R, you can come look at the, uh, video with me if you would like, um, but no, I have not reported that to anybody, I've reported it.
Okay, yeah, just so long as he's notified.
Yeah, soon. Absolutely.
And one quick sideline question. Is there anything that we can do to maintenance that or, uh, provide cover? No, no, just to, to prevent any further spalding, spalding or it, it.
You absolutely can rehab concrete pipes, so they've got all sorts of products, they can go in there with a, um, they can go with like a, uh, inflatable PVC pipe liner, it's a really cool process, have you seen them do it? Where they'll go in and pull a deflated balloon, but it's a PVC or HPE pipe that they've flattened out and they'll run a hot, uh, gas through it, they'll spread it out up against it and they'll come in with a camera and a machine and cut out any of their inlets. Really cool process, you can go in and, they've got a, there's several processes you can rehabilitate it, but honestly, our pipe is in pretty good condition, I guess that's what I was looking at. Is that there's some minor spalding, but short of minor spalding for.
That's all you need to add.
Concrete, or, or concrete pipe a little under seventy-something. It really looks pretty good. Um, down to the treasure, I mean, we got our, our program funding done, um, we've got a business starting construction out on the electrical warehouse out in the business park. We've got our, uh, compliance done, we have to, for border review, we have to have at least one person attend all of our, uh, border review, Kings annually now as opposed to every other year. Renee and I both, uh, took that, so we're covered. Uh, police, we've had a lot of complaints about speeding on South State Street, um, near the Randall Farm, um, with the speed limits there. We have sent, uh, or asked Colin to be more vigilant in that area, um, he's, he's done that again. And then with, uh, our officer, uh, our, the full-time officer coming back from maternity leave, we've spent more time doing, uh, speed, um, monitoring, I would say speed enforcement, but we're really not seeing a speeding issue when the police department's there. I get that there can be speeding when somebody's not there, I mean, it happens, uh. I've, I, I know I've been speeding places and not been caught by a cop, I kid.
And there's no way we can put a stop sign there because it's a county road, right?
No, that's correct, the county is in charge of the signing, the speed limit, the county is in charge of that.
But they're not speeding, that's what the police.
Is it okay for me to toss in something at this point?
Is the board okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
You brought up the problem with speeding, uh, I think the removal of the stop signs on Jackson Avenue at White was a good idea overall, but it has turned out to be a little bit of a mixed blessing. Now we have a speed problem extreme, uh, you probably know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about with this, uh, stop signs being pulled out, absolutely, I still stop at it sometimes.
I'm sorry?
I still stop at the imaginary stop sign sometimes.
Well, okay, but most people don't, the ones, uh, the ones that didn't stop before don't even slow down, I mean, I'd say the average speed is thirty-five to forty miles an hour there. And if I'm not mistaken, the, uh, state statute is twenty-five for a residential zone. And we have had flat zero police presence in our neighborhood since Colin has been around. I haven't seen a squad guarding a neighborhood since Chad was the place's chief, other than to stop at my house. So that's all I have to say, we need some speed enforcement on Jackson.
Okay.
Do you, um.
Thank you.
Thank you, somebody made a comment of being a county road or.
It's county road, yeah.
Um, the little wheeled cart things, the little speed rating, kind of county or state roads, is that as decided by county and state whether you can park those things?
So if you remember, we talked about this, um, so yes, that, there's two different options on that, we can request the county to bring one, um, the county to do a speed study, we, I mean, we've gone over this a lot of times, yeah. But they did, the county does not recognize it as a problem, they say, we've got a uniformed speed, there is a, there is a standard in which we evaluate the speed limits we want. There's a standard in which we value, you know, how many driveways, how many residents, what you have along the side for establishing the speed limit. And then they have a, um, you know, are, are we experiencing a problem there? Um, the county came and did a speed study at the request of the village, if you look at the basket on there, there's, the speed study didn't show a necessarily a problem there, there are some outside, you know, there were some speeders there.
Sound layers, but yeah.
But as a most part of that, speed study doesn't show it now, if you talk to some of the residents in the neighborhood, they will explain why they think the speed study was flawed and why they think it should've been done differently. Um, but the county did come and do a speed study. Now, we talked about, um, we had a previous board member that proposed putting in a, um, a radar sign, you can put those signs on the, on a pole that will show the.
Speed.
The speed that the, uh, drivers going faster, going, you can slow down, you can have it flash if they're going over a set speed or whatever it is. Um, at the time, the board was not in favor of purchasing one of those.
Right.
They said that they were seeing a speed problem and that there was a.
Yep.
There was, there was a decent capital cost for something to.
Thirty-five hundred.
That was about a year ago.
Yeah, um, so yes, it could be done, but it's not something that we're currently pursuing.
Well, and Jared, the police report said they didn't see any problems, there was no one speeding, at least when they were there.
Yeah.
Right.
And they are doing increased, so every time I get another complaint in there, we talk with Colin and get about it, just because when residents have a concern, this is something we wanna make sure.
Absolutely.
Um, and Colin, uh, and maybe there's other neighborhoods that we, uh, need to send, say.
Rock and Jackson.
Yeah, make, make sure we're, make sure we're checking the north side of the tracks as well.
I can guarantee there are other neighborhoods.
Well, and I, I'm just saying, I, when I'm out and about, I do see, I do see the squad, uh, out in neighborhoods, um, to be fair, I don't drive a lot on the north side of the tracks, other than go to the sewer plant and blossom. So, so I might not see it there, but we can certainly ask, uh, Colin to, you know, make sure that we're, make sure we're seeing a, a police present on the north side of the tracks as well.
I should think of pass every two or three hours once we auto-hide.
Noted about Jackson, and so back to the Randall and State Street. We're, we're not seeing a speeding problem, police are not seeing it, so we're, we're trying to correct something that may not be a problem.
We have a resident that's insistent that it is a problem.
Yeah, I know, maybe we should, I can go talk to him, I know the resident, because sometime, he's doing an eyeball, you know, he's sitting there, sitting on an eyeball.
Yeah, if you're standing still, thirty's fast.
There he does seem fast, yeah.
It's thirty-five right there.
Thirty-five.
It's thirty-five right there.
And, and he's got all the reasonable reasons it should be lower, and, you know, there, there's multiple concerns there, but we are running, we are running enforcement, we are.
So we, we've done our job.
And we're trying to do more of it, to be honest, uh, the squeaky wheel does get the grease and the, the more I hear about it, the more I remind Colin about it and the more times, uh, we get officer present there. I mean, it just, the squeaky wheel does get the grease, we have seen more and more, especially since we have another officer returned, when Colin was all by himself.
Sure.
It's just all their, I mean, it's not just, uh, Jackson that was light on police presence, when you've got to do everything that needs to be done in the department and you're one person.
Understand.
You just probably don't spend as much time doing enforcement, cause there's a lot of things. But since Kelly's come back on, we are seeing significantly more, uh, street times, so.
I'm good on that, I think it's good.
Okay, um, there was another grant that we talked briefly on with the police department, there's another seven thousand dollars that's coming in with one of, uh, Governor Eber's, uh, thank you very much, is, um, Public Works, uh, you can see that we did the, I got, you can see our normal things that we've got listed here.
Mm-hmm.
We had our sanitary survey, vague flushing lines, uh, not sanitary survey, apologize, sanitary sewer flushing lines, say the right thing. Um, we're back on for, uh, disinfection out at the sewer plant, that we hit our new window. Uh, Keller Park is back on with the plant, or the wells had to be tested and brought back on. I guess I'll leave anything else in there to the report, but are there any questions?
All right, thanks Jared for that, any questions for village administrator?
Do we have to test annually at, at the park because there are many new spellings or is it?
Every time we bring the well back online, we have to test.
Okay.
So we do, we just, we have, we have to go through a process and make sure we certify the well and then we have to test, get a clean back to you and then we, uh, open it to the public. Which I think technically we can open it and have it back to you within a week, but we get the clean one back first.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have an idea of what I think it is, um, with the bills, and I sent it to Jared, so I'm gonna have him confirm it.
Okay.
But I think that there's different ways you can print the report and the second time I said just, um, general invoices and so it omitted the payroll invoices on the report. But he's gonna check it and then I'll download a new.
Download the new one, send one off.
I sent it to you, I sent it to you.
I'm not, I'm not certain you're right, but I'll go double check it.
I think I am too now. There's so many ways you can print the report that I just missed one part.
Push it to the back in the immediate future, so people can look at it and I'll confirm.
Okay, um, so, committee reports, um, we're kind of between, so I don't know if there's been any committee reports, there is nothing on the packet, anybody have anything?
Well, I'll just mention from my committee that I did submit the grant application for the DNR, for the stewardship grant, it is in, so now it's a very long process to see if we get one. And then also our Eagleness project is just flying along nice.
Okay.
How would you get there?
Little bit of driving.
So, the, just, the grant was playground equipment grant, is that that one?
It was for playground equipment.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's for playground equipment in Keller Park.
Okay, and is there a grant application amount?
One hundred, it's a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred, it's a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay. Is it all or nothing, sort of thing?
It's a fifty percent reimbursement grant, if we get the grant, they'll pay fifty percent and then I had to show how we would come up with the rest of the money and actually we can do that with in-kind labor and I set it up with in-kind labor and help with the St. Louis, or St. Louis, I'm there too. With Eau Claire, Eau Claire, um, Parks and Forest as well as the Town of Lincoln, as soon as this meeting is over, I'm hoping to make the Town of Lincoln, so they're gonna give us a little input. And Lions also, I have a meeting with Lions tomorrow night, so that we can cover, so hopefully we can do it for free for the village, if we get the grant.
Okay.
So.
Is that replacing some of the stuff that's already there or adding?
It would replace the entire set of what's already in Keller.
Both of them?
Both of them. They would all go away and then the surfacing would be changed, cause with sand right now, it would go to these fiber wood chips, which are safer and better, it's a softer surface when you fall.
Does that include the toddler stuff, the, the little?
That includes, the little rockers would be replaced too with some other little toddler stuff, I have a whole picture, I mean, we can show it, yeah, it's all replaced.
The equipment down there is just worn out, outdated?
It is, it is not only worn out, it's actually, when I talked to Parks and Forest, Josh Peterson, he said, I can come down and inspect the equipment. But he said, if I find, and I showed him pictures, he took pictures, he said, you see that crack, you see that break, he said, I would have to shut your park down. So I better not come and inspect it, so just tell, you know, just, we're, so, yeah, we don't wanna do that, so we just, yeah. So yes, it needs to be replaced, you're right, you're right.
The, the pricing, was it like just a one-for-one replacement, that's how you came up with that price on it? Or just how did you come up with a plan or a floor plan for what would go to the park?
We had, I had had presented an entire plan of how we would come up with the pricing and so the manufacturer of the equipment is giving us a huge discount on the equipment, which is a donation. And then donations from businesses as well as Town of Lincoln help, the counties help and then Lions, if they decide to help us. And a lot of it is in-kind labor, that we would do the labor to put in the install, that we would take out all, all the equipment and discard it. Um, villagers would, and get rid of the concrete footings and, um, then we would also do the install supervised by the company, that we would have volunteers out there doing the work. So, that, that all is money, I mean, we get to put money on those numbers.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, yeah, it sounds really great, I was just wondering if, if, who's set of eyes were looking at it based on, you know, the outdoor recreation plan and all, like this was the floor plan and this toddler section hit this and, you know, you know.
That was, yeah, it's the, it's the company that put forth the proposal, because I told them about how much we could afford or how much we could come up with in-kind.
Okay.
And so they gave us, this is what you can buy for this amount of money, so.
So the company proposed?
The company proposed it, yes. And the company is Minnesota Wisconsin Playground. And they have a whole drawings and schematics and.
And your committee, your committee's been working on this?
Elevation and everything.
Your committee, your committee's been working on this, yeah?
Yeah, well, it's, the committee said that I could work on it, so yeah, that's, and the deadline was last Monday.
Okay. Thank you for doing that, sounds really good, that'd be nice to get that. Okay, uh, did you wanna go back to nine yet or you think?
We're gonna go back.
Push it.
Correct.
It's pushed, I don't know if it's downloaded, but it's pushed. I, I don't have my own set to see if it's there. And so.
It's different.
Okay, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, has all the ACH stuff.
And it probably, it won't have the color coding on it yet.
Um.
But the total at the bottom is right.
Seventy-three.
Coors has so many reports and so many ways that you can print it, that I just mistakenly only chose standard invoices instead of all types. And so remember how we talked to you about the payroll invoices, that we want the payroll system to be able to generate those invoices itself, which saves me time. So I just, I just printed the report incorrectly the second time, sorry.
Now I make a motion to pay the bills.
All right.
Second.
Motion second, any comments or questions? Thanks for looking that up. Anything else? All right, see none, we'll go, roll call, well, oh, wait a minute, here's a motion second, yeah.
We're good.
Hervison?
Yes.
Heard abstain. Cots?
Yeah.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Ailsworth?
I have to abstain.
And Goodman?
Yes.
Okay. Did number ten, eleven, number twelve, A, second reading, possible adoption of ordinance, sewer, amending and repealing sections of chapter two fourteen sewer. So, we had.
No changes between first and second reading or proposal.
Right.
Okay.
We're just gonna leave it alone?
It's got the two changes we talked about in the first reading.
And they're highlighted in red?
Yes. Maximum of twenty-five, uh, hundred gallons a week and it's the updating of the fees scheduled at ninety and fourteen.
I make a motion that we pass the second reading of the ordinance title eight sewer, amending and repealing sections of, as it's written now with the red line. I second it.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions?
Well, I would love to see, um, I didn't see a place where we, where we were using, uh, the administrator as kind of the stopgap.
The administrator as what, Matt?
As this, as a stopgap.
For what?
Well, just to determine who can, who can, who can, uh, who can dump, who can't dump.
Oh, the point of term is that.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
It's, it's an ordinance, we have to approve. We have to approve licensing of the people. They come in and they make application during certain months. And then the board approves the license one by one.
Oh, like a yearly license?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's just like our alcohol.
Then I can some time with that.
I do apologize. There is one huge change. I changed the formatting between the first and second reading. The language is all the same, but it's in the new format. I apologize.
Right.
There's one very big change between first and second reading. We talked about that we would put it in the new format. The formatting has changed, but language wise, it's all identical.
Right. So do you understand why I'm talking that way? I'm talking about the day-to-day operations. The board can't get together and decide. Can't get together and decide, hey, you can dump today.
Yeah, I think that would be under my purview as a training ordinance, to be real honest.
Right. And I was looking for that earlier today. I did not, I did not see that.
When we give the license, Matt, we can say you're only going to put in holding water. You only have stuff that is this quality. I mean, that's what we, we'll decide as a board. And they have to make an application and say this is what they want to dump and they have to write all that down in their license applications they have to make to the board.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Karen Hervison, you said what?
Then they can only do it on Tuesdays.
Only dump on Tuesdays or?
Okay, with a motion and a second, any other questions on this ordinance updates and reforming?
Is your motion, is the motion for A and B together? Is that?
No, just A.
Oh.
All right. See none will do a, I think we need a roll call vote on ordinance updates in the section reading.
Heard?
Heard? Yes.
Cots?
No.
Mattoon?
No.
Rapp?
Yes.
Ailsworth?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now, where's, 12B? Just, now we can walk through these. This one's not a red line. I didn't notice on there. Hopefully, it's, it's fine. We'll just.
Sorry, there's no changes to this one between your first and second reading, but for the two of you who haven't read it already, I apologize. I.
Yeah, so it's, there's no redlining in it?
Yeah, I apologize.
No, 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 it's not the ball field. It's government administration.
So let me get to.
Yeah, it's all words of changes.
Would you, can you dump the red line version in there?
Okay, let's, if you can dump the red line version, we'll do the 12, jump to 12C, we'll come back to 12B.
Okay.
We had Ben Birch serving as the contact for the, the ball field for the board. He's not with the board anymore, so I just kind of wanted to know if we wanted him to continue on to come on and give us reports on that at times. Or if wanted somebody else to fill that role. I'm sure Ben would come in and give updates. And I think he's still staying pretty well integrated with that project. So, you know, he's been giving it, he's already came in and gives them updates, so.
And there's Matt Bartow too. He's, he's really, I know that Ben goes to Matt to get the information and so Matt is really a good, strong point.
Yeah, I think Ben said he feels more empowered to go take more role now. He just had the, sitting on the board kind of faded. There was a number of things he couldn't do. So I think between Ben and Matt. Yeah, I think, I think things sound like they're, they're moving pretty well. They did, I did read the Lions minutes and I don't know what happened at the last Lions meeting, but there must have been some back and forth and then Matt kind of conceded to not do the, start the ball field until after Fun Fest. So I don't know.
That's, that's what happened. I was at the meeting.
Yes.
And Matt Bartow gave the presentation along with the, the engineer that drew up the plans and so it was an excellent presentation. And by the end of the meeting, it was a win-win on everybody's part. So everybody was happy and satisfied and we all understood what was going on and we're all happy.
So I don't think we need any action there unless we're just gonna go and leave Ben and Matt as the.
You don't need a motion or anything?
I, I don't think so. We're not really gonna change anything. Are we ready? Did you update that one?
No, I haven't found it yet.
Can we do 13A amendment to garbage service contract?
Yeah. Couple of things on this one. The amendment to garbage service contract is kind of convoluted in our current agreement. So 15% of your monthly charge is considered a fuel service charge. The base charge was set in July of 2020, like $2.34 or whatever it was. Every quarter, they can request an adjustment based on what the fuel charge is in that quarter based against $2.31. So currently we're 2, 230% or whatever, 4.99 according to the, and the fuel charge is based on the Midwest.
525, no, or diesel?
Yeah, whatever, whatever the Midwest such and such fuel charge is.
Oh, okay.
And that's, and that's dated on the first day of the quarter, I think it is, and then they can make a recommendation.
Gotcha.
Apparently that is very much so an advanced or, maybe it was been, was it been something before advanced? Anyways, it's not waste management's language. They don't like it.
They're violent, others do.
Yeah, they have, they haven't been requesting the fuel servicing increase charges. So we've made the 3%. So there's two places within that contract where they can raise rates. They can raise our rates 3% for the cost of CPI for the Midwest region, whichever is less. So that 3%, whichever is less causes saving us a 3% because CPI the last couple of years has been significantly over 3%. So that 3% raise provision has been, has been a good thing for us. So they can get that 3% and they can get a fuel service adjustment. Because this doesn't fit into waste management's metric, they haven't been getting a fuel service increase as the price of fuel skyrocketed. When the price of fuel got really high, they went, wait a second, what's up with Fall Creek and Augusta? They seem, they seem a little off. They came and they presented to you their current rate that they use for all of their other contracts they write.
Can, can I, just so everybody understands, the contract was an anomaly, so it hasn't hit their radar. So I think Jared is saying they could have been increasing the rate along.
The whole time.
Did the flag didn't come up, like, because all their other contracts are the same. And so they've been sort of cookie cutter and everybody else. And then they're like, why is Fall Creek and Augusta not changing? And they're like, well, because it's not part of everybody else's formula. So they're like, well, we can either, I think what they're saying now is we can either use the contract you have, which I think Jared's probably gonna.
Yeah. If we use our contract, it gets significantly more expensive. And unless fuel drops below $2.30, it's never going to be the other way. So originally I saw the contract, but I wanted to run the numbers and see if there was a cross point, you know, if we get to $6 a gallon, our current contract is better. Or, you know, at $3, at no point is it cheaper for us unless it gets below $2 and, I want to say 30 cents, whatever it was on July 1st.
234.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, 234, whatever it was. The other thing that this contract amendment is proposing is that it pushes out our date two more years on the service contract. And unless inflation, we think anybody thinks inflation is going to be up below 3% for the next couple of years? I don't know if you remember last month, we talked about this. I said that if I could extend this contract for a while, I would. Because we're stuck at 3% inflation. We didn't request that. They proposed it. My big concern with that is that we want to stay tracking with Augusta because we don't have the, if we want to go for a new garbage service contract, we have better marketability when we go at the same time as Augusta because they're bidding Augusta and Fall Creek at the same time. So I talked with Augusta fairly extensively on this. They meet tomorrow night for this same amendment. They would like to extend it. They, they think that that's going to be a good thing for them. So if this looks like a good thing to the board, you guys decide you would like to approve it, which I recommend we do. I think this is, from a financial standpoint, this is a good choice. We are gonna have to eat the fuel charge. It is gonna raise our rates and there's no question about it. Fuel, it's going that one way or another.
Yep.
Yes.
But let's minimize the pain wherever we can. But I want to stay on the track with Augusta. If the board was so willing, if they made a motion that was, you know, to approve this conditional upon Augusta approving the same contract. And if Augusta doesn't approve it, we'll look at it again. But they think they're going to approve it. They think they're gonna do it. But I do think we want to stay tracked with Augusta. Anyways, it seems like a pretty, pretty straightforward, good deal for us.
So then it won't change the days, the.
No, it's just a provision.
Size container and all that stuff.
It just changes 5.2.2 or 5.2.4, whatever the provision.
We're going to pay more money, but we would pay more money whether we got a contract.
It's like $300 versus a $1,000 a month difference this month.
Yeah. We have saved so much money with this.
Do we have to, we can do this without Augusta to extend five years, right? So we don't have to have a contingent on Augusta.
No, we don't. But if we get off from Augusta and decide we want to go out to bid, what we're, so for instance, we had, we had some of the bags not get picked up today. They'll pick them up tomorrow on Tuesday. They have Augusta on Tuesday and they have us on Friday. So if there's, you know, they need to go drop off barrels, they have us staggered on purpose so that they're driving through one way or the other. If they need to go get a pickup or drop something off, but it's there in place. And at least from what I understand, the companies want to have Fall Creek and Augusta together. So we are less competitive if we, if we have to go, if Augusta goes in three years and then we go in five years, we won't be as competitive if we're not with Augusta. So I think we do want to track with.
Okay. So if we made a contingent, we would come back and revisit this. Is there a timeline that Waste Management wants to hear back on this?
If they don't hear back from us, they'll send us a bill for the, they, they have, they have not, according to the contract, they have to give notice that they are seeking the fuel service charge increase. They have, as of today, not sent that. So we have a little bit of time, but they already haven't sent it because they said, yeah, we see there's a problem. We'd like to change it.
Right. I'm just saying, is this offer on the table for so long?
No, they've not given us a provisional offer. They want it because it's just the same as all the rest of their contracts.
Yeah.
If it's in there, it could be better.
Well, it says effective June 1st, right?
I mean, that's, because that's the summer. It's a, it's just a clean two-year extension is what that does.
I make a motion to approve. If you want a contingency in the motion, I'll add it.
I appreciate you.
Contingent on?
Augusta.
Augusta's.
Approve the same, same amendment?
Yep.
Okay. Renee, did you get that?
I do.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the amendment to the garbage contract contingent on Augusta approving the same amendment as well.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any other comments or questions on this? All right. See none will do roll call vote.
Cots?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Ailsworth?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Heard?
Yes.
Okay. So 12B, are we ready to go back to that?
Jared, did I get the right one? So we're not quite right.
Is there, is there, what's the 13D and C? Do we want to get hit those along with garbage and then come back to it?
I don't have red lines on there, Renee.
I, I, that's why I scanned it because I, but is the one in front of you have the red lines?
Yes.
Okay. And that one's good? So, okay. It'll take me a minute though, Tim, so you keep going and I'll get it on there in a minute.
I don't have anything under 13D.
Yeah, me neither. So, so.
Did you want to talk about 13B?
That's on 13C.
I can talk about 13 if we're.
Yep.
Okay. So last year we talked about the fuels or the administration charge we called a charge for garbage.
Yeah.
So for the service rate, we just do a straight pass-through. If you want a 33 gallon or a, you know, 35, 66, 95, whatever our container sizes are, what it costs us from Waste Management, we pass on to our customer. We have a, originally we threw a $1.
We updated it out.
Yeah. Originally we had a $1 additional administration fee. Looking at that, it was not sufficient. If we wanted to run it as a true enterprise fund in which we were accurately reflecting the amount of cost we had for office and for just plain operating cost that it takes us to run the garbage, it needed to be higher than that. At the time, I recommended that we used $4 based on the numbers in the presentation we put together at the time. There was some heartache at that, feeling that we didn't want to increase our garbage rates that much. That people were already struggling with it and weren't happy to have, the village having taken it over felt like it was somehow a bad deal for them. So at the time, I believe it was Sheena made the motion that we went up to $1 and then if we wanted to reevaluate in a year or reevaluate annually to see if we wanted to increase that or decrease that. We're annually on that. It's time to talk about it.
So Jared, are we spending that much time? I mean, I know that the clerk or whoever's putting out the, has to deal with this. So are we trying to reimburse them for the time? I mean, or is that a cost that the village can, I know it is a cost that the village can absorb because we just heard that we have all these online designated funds at 51%. We have some money. We know that. So is this something that we want to do so that we're not, I'm asking the board this, not Jared, I'm sorry, the question's to you, but I'm, it's really to the board. Is this something that we want to do? We have the money that we can cover a surcharge and we can do this. Or are we gonna pass the cost on to the residents? They are already feeling the burden of all kinds of things. And so is this something we're gonna do? I don't know. I'm, I think we should discuss it.
The thing with that is that.
Do we have, were you finished with the information as far as like how do you establish what the cost is to administer? Do you have that?
So the way, so the way we establish that is the same way we do for our other utilities. So we have our water and our sewer fund that are supposed to be enterprise accounts. And as we've talked about multiple times, an enterprise account should be funded by the users, government entities or taxpayer money. Doesn't typically subsidize enterprise accounts. Now, we've done that in the past for various reasons. This board has decided that they would like to take some governmental funds and put into those enterprise accounts. But typically enterprise accounts are supposed to be standalone. We are running garbage fund as an enterprise account, so it should be standalone. Typically speaking. Now, if we decide we don't want to do that, we can. Now, the way we allocated those funds is we take, for instance, we take Joan and Renee's wage and we assign a percent of the time that we think that they're spending in their, in their work week to garbage versus water versus sewer versus general governmental tasks. And then we apply that across their wages, across their health insurance, across.
Retirement.
Retirement, across all of them. Now, there are some additional costs. For instance, we take rate increases, but we don't necessarily get to pass them on for a month or two. So we'll take a 3% rate increase, but we can't pass that on until after they've told us that they're taking the rate increase. And then we've meant to move it last month, or last year, we had a couple of months we paid the rate increase. It happens. It's, it's part of the process of it. But we do end up needing that money to do it. Now, we don't, like you say, we don't have to. The board gets, the board gets to make that, the board gets to make that choice. What we effectively did when we didn't have the, the $4, I think it was 375 that I was asking for last year. What we effectively did is we just assigned less time to the garbage than we were in reality spending it to the garbage. So instead of saying that, you know, you're at 10% or 15%, we assigned it at, and I, I don't, I'll have to go look up to remember. I took the amount of money I had and put the percentage based on how much money we had. And I don't remember that percentage off the top of my head, what, what percentage it is. But yes, we can fund it, but typically a garbage or a utility, a garbage utility should pay it and.
What's the data though? Like, there's data, gotta be data behind it, right? Like, you have how much time you spend?
I think the data is gonna come from Joan and Renee, how much.
I can do another rate study if you want to do another rate study. Last year.
No, just how much do they spend, how much time do they spend?
So we don't, we didn't do a full, we, we did a time survey a few years ago in which they were trying to track everything they, you know. Today I spent X amount of time on this, X amount of time on this, X amount of time.
Yeah, that's, I know it's.
Yeah, it's fairly cumbersome and we can do that. But I don't want to ask people to do that if it's not something that we're going to take into consideration. If we're just gonna say we don't want to fund it that way anyways, it actually takes up a decent amount of your time to do it. So if, if you guys want it, we absolutely can do it. And I, and I can give, I can give good numbers again. We can, we can run good numbers on that. But it is fairly time-consuming and honestly, a fairly big pain. But if we're gonna say, you know what, $2 is all we feel like the village can take at this point anyways, so we're not.
My opinion is not to put you through that drill. No need.
No. Would it make a difference to move Joan back from the library for a little bit? Like, would that be a significant?
I would not like to talk about that in open session, but no.
Okay.
But is the, is the, is your day, like, what is the change? So that's your body of work. You do that body of work whether the rate increase goes, the, the garbage goes up or not. You do that body of work whether the rate increase goes, the, the garbage goes up or not. That body of work is the same body of work as you did yesterday as you do today, right?
Yeah, you just, when, when you talk about enterprise funds standing alone.
Right.
You, you like to have an accurate share of the time it takes that. If, let's say if your garbage was so cumbersome or whatever, the people are calling all the time and it's fifty percent of your time and you only charge it five percent, somebody else is paying forty-five percent of your time. It's water, it's sewer, it's general fund and it's not good accounting principle.
Reflecting it correctly.
Yeah. So if you-
They're talking about reflecting it correctly.
So what they say, if you want to do good accounting principles and we give you this rate study, this is what you should be. But if you're not and you're flushed somewhere else and you just, you want to say like, okay, I'm gonna underestimate my time is what Jared is saying. We, we think it's fifteen percent of our time, we're just gonna say, no, it's five percent of our time and maybe we'll try to be more efficient this year or something. I don't know, so that's-
Because it's, because it's a standalone, it should be standalone, that's what you're saying. So the body of work that you have, there are pieces that, that are, that should be standalone that are enterprise um accounts. So you're dealing with enterprise accounts and those are the ones that that little slice of pie should be paid for through that enterprise account. That's what you're trying to get at.
It's supposed to support itself.
Okay.
So we're supposed to, the garbage, what we charge should support itself. That's, that's what the enterprise fund is, that we should charge as much as that we have to pay out. That's what it comes down to. So my question to the board is, and, and help me think through this. Right now, our villagers at the number one complaint is the high water sewer, it's their utilities. Now, we know it's a sewer, we know what the, what the problem is. And when they see another utility, I know it's garbage, it's a separate fund, they see another utility go up, is there any relief that we can give the villagers and say, we're trying to help you? Yes, the villi, that, we should be charging more for garbage, but because we can't bring any, we can at least do this much for you. That's my question. Can we do something to help them? Or are we gonna just charge them again?
Can I, can I add just a little in the way where, and I think, yeah, we, we can always consider that. But let's say where, where that breaks down a little bit, and I don't know if the scale is large enough here to be even just might be in the noise, so we don't care.
Might be really tiny, really tiny, yes.
Let's say you had five hundred homes here and only three hundred used garbage, but you were gonna subsidize garbage using taxes. All five hundred people are paying for garbage even though they don't have a service then. Now, that's, the scale's gotta be very large where it becomes, okay, that accounting principle's broken there.
Right.
We might not be there, so.
Right.
This is probably maybe one of those that are so low that you're like, okay, we're, we're fine. I think you can factor that into your decision. But you need to understand.
Right.
Somebody's paying for it.
Right.
A certain bank, yeah.
Someone's paying for it.
So, so right now are we doing a dollar?
We're doing two.
We're doing two dollars?
Last year when we-
Go ahead, no.
Yeah, I have a question. I have two questions. One, how many garbage users do we have in town? Do we know, do we have a number off hand?
I'd say four fifty.
But four hundred and fifty households?
Don't hold me to it.
Okay.
I didn't look it up before.
Okay. And then, second, do we have any information on what it costs the average consumer in Augusta, in Osseo and Eau Claire or whatever, being that, or anybody that even, where the village or the municipality doesn't um have one hauler? Or do we know what it costs other people? Like, have we?
It's a good question. I see, what I hear you saying is, you know, how do you make a decision without the data? Right? You want to know what everybody's paying?
Cause I don't, I see what you're saying. I don't want to say, like, nobody wants to pull up their bill and say, another four dollars a month? But also, it's not sustainable for us to say, we're just gonna take from here and for the next couple of years, we're just gonna like ease, we're gonna put a big date on it. And then in four years from now.
We're gonna rip it off.
Now, ten dollars.
Right, right.
That's not sustainable and then also if we have four hundred and fifty-ish users and we're using, you know, we're using thirteen hundred people's tax dollars or not thirty, it won't be thirteen hundred, however many households then to fund that when they, then that's everybody paying for the four fifty that are using the, like you said. And so that's not.
Right, I think-
Well, that's what I was getting at, it's like-
I think we have like five hundred homes in our four fifty.
So if we go up a dollar or we go up two dollars, the point is, is we gotta go up, right?
So as it's been discussed, it should take care of itself. So as an example, if you keep kicking the ball down the road, it'll be on a different level, but it'll be a sewer plant issue. You didn't prepare for a sewer plant. They did, and they did the best job they could, the people who are sitting here at the time, holding the sewer rates down for years and years and years and years. When I moved here, my sewer bill was thirty dollars a quarter or something like that. And then one month, it was thirty dollars a month. And now it's where it is today. It's things we have to do, it's hard work, it's, it's hard to do. But if you kick the ball down the road, my opinion is, is you're just gonna create a bigger ball at some point that you're gonna have to divide up.
Yeah.
If it's a dollar, it's a dollar. Maybe we can't take the whole piece like you'd wanted to last time, you took a dollar last time. Maybe you take a dollar this time. You can't take all the sewer rate at the same time because it would just upset the cart. But I think you need to move in that direction. Everybody needs to understand that, and it's difficult for residents, but they see everything going up in their world too. These are services just like food and gasoline and their insurance and their, all these things. The village supplies these things for them. Those things are gonna go up too unfortunately. We, we can't, I am not a believer in, we want to do what's best for the, all the time, the residents. It's about the residents and how we can make their place better. But it's not necessarily better by kicking the ball down the road.
And it's not free.
And it's not free because then we are taking money from somewhere else and, and there are things maybe that general fund money should be used for, should be used for. But, but paying a garbage bill when everybody's is, I think they should be taking that on themselves.
I hear you. But it, like, I, I can't just, I don't, I can't make a decision without that. Like, I don't, I can't just say I think I'm gonna work fifty percent of the time.
What if we make a motion to put this to committee?
Well, they did that information already and-
I don't know how much time they spent, show me.
But Ryan, I think that what he was saying was that he wanted to know if he wanted us to get the information. Cause in the past-
They did it in the past and it's cumbersome and we want to do it again, but in the past-
But where's the past data?
He said it was three seventy-five from, from last year.
Year ago or two years ago?
Two years ago, three dollars and seventy-five.
I'm sorry, I just stopped following.
You don't have to make it, you don't have to make a decision right now what the rate would be, but you give direction that you'd like a study to be done because you're thinking that you'd like to do it.
If you're not gonna do it, you're always, if you want to do it, we'll get you the data.
Ryan, I don't know that you're asking that. You're asking, well, how many households would it be? What would the rate, you know, what are we suggesting, whether you, we have a rate study done. They've already done a rate study. We don't want to have to put them through a bunch of hoops that, we don't, we want to take care of our staff too. So we don't need to do that, but, you know, Sheena's question is valid. How many users do we have? Okay, so if they're gonna go up a dollar, they're gonna pay a dollar more, so that's gonna mean four hundred and fifteen dollars that the village would not have to pay. And then we look at precedents and, you know, say, will user transfer anything in excess over revenue? We put that into an enterprise fund that went to the sewer, that stopped about, what, a year ago or something, Tim? This is this past year that we stopped doing that. So maybe we need to look at, I make a motion that we move this into committee, this issue into committee so that we can further investigate it and let the committee uh look at that.
What is the committee analyzing? Like, what's the, the?
It'd be public works.
It'd be pub, right, but what, what is the purpose of that committee getting together?
I'm kinda confused.
To go through all of this?
Because this is the first time that we as a board are really looking at this, well, it's some of the board members and they just need time to examine it, talk about it, and so, you know, look at the time that we spend. If we would have had a committee recommendation saying, we recommend that we do this or that, then it would be easy because we've discussed this at length and in other venue, the committee, but maybe not everybody.
Well, they can come to the committee meetings if they're not, anybody can come to a committee meeting if they're not, if they're not assigned to-
So I think there is some information and whether we need new updated information. I think she's making a motion to put it to committee to either look at the information and make a recommendation or get new information, I think.
I second it. If we can get the old data, I think that would help you see.
Are you following me, which we're, there's, I'm trying to think it?
Oh, uh, you know, we each make a decision.
Oh, I mean, do you hear what I?
I, I absolutely, I absolutely hear what you say. There, there's a motion on the floor. I would have motioned something different, but there's a motion on the floor in a second. Um but if we can talk about it.
I don't know.
I, I would have, I would have, and I remember my first board meeting too, where I sat just like you and it's like, oh my god, I do remember. There's a, there's a middle ground. We uh, he said three seventy-five. Uh, she asked, we got four hundred and fifty houses paying, uh, there's probably five hundred, five and a quarter houses in town, something like that. So there's a small percentage of people that aren't paying. We don't want taxpayer money to go for this. It should be, um, the onus should be on the citizens.
Right.
But, but what we could do today, what we could do today, since he said two years ago, we're at like three seventy-five and we're paying a dollar then, she made a motion last year, brought it up to two dollars. We could motion to add another dollar now and at the same time, have a committee meeting and find out if we're still at three seventy-five because so far, we didn't ask this one question, which I could ask right now. Has anything been streamlined in the, the two years that we've done this?
That's what I get.
Yeah, or are we still right now at three sev, about three seventy-five?
Way more streamlined.
Okay, so maybe that three seventy-five came down or not?
I would guess you had raises and other income would offset that.
Yeah. Good point.
But you know we're already behind.
So by, by-
I know it's like, like, I know it's a dollar or whatever, right? But in my mind, how do you know, right?
But see, that's, that's, that's part of why we want to push it to a committee because all of that can get hashed out, we can get more data so that we're not doing it here, so that-
Where are we getting the data?
So this, this-
Because Karen, you, Karen Heard, you said, you said, we don't really want to bother them by redoing the study again.
We don't want to do that, we want the old data.
Oh, okay.
We just want, we just want-
The old data, if you're gonna make a meeting over old data, you might as well just use the number he's got.
If you're gonna send it to committee, we need direction to be real honest. Because if, if we're, if we're holding it off, we're wanting more data, tell me what data you want so we can prepare it for a committee, because otherwise we'll have a committee meeting to say, give us this data, then we'll push off for another month and then we'll, so if you're gonna send it to committee, that's okay. Or if you're going to act on it, but whatever you do, please give us some direction so we know what direction we're going to take.
How much?
If you're looking for more data, tell us what you want him to do.
How much a pay period for the garbage, how much, right, is the bill for garbage, how much a month?
Yeah, that, that's not-
Does, that, does administrative cost, do we know that?
That's what the study was before.
Before, it had said two dollars.
Three seventy-five is what the estimated was per user to cover the administrative fee. When we started, when we started, we didn't know and like, okay, let's just charge a dollar. And then after time it was like, yeah, our garbage fund is not holding itself up and so they did a rate study.
Right.
Just what you're asking, how much time does it take, you know, what are you gonna do, how many phone calls? And they did an estimate on what percentage of their time. And then he ran the numbers with that percentage of time, salaries and everything else at the time and it came out, we should be charging three dollars and seventy-five cents instead of a dollar.
So a year ago, we were above seventy-five behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
Or behind, you know. So now, we're above seventy-five at least behind.
We assumed that, to get the bargaining power of the village, we had to take over and administer it. So Waste Management would charge you a service fee and everything else for the, for the people taking the phone calls, sending out the bills and that was on there. So we had to figure out how to do that. And we started with a dollar and it wasn't enough. Instead of we said, okay, let's do an incremental jump, we did get to three seventy-five and went to two dollars.
Two dollars.
So we said every year we're gonna look at it then, so Jared's coming back.
That's what we're saying, right?
Yeah.
Proactive look.
So even though it went stream, even though it's more streamlined, everything has gone up.
Yeah.
So really it's, it's holding steady.
So what, the really-
So three seventy-five is kinda-
We're still a dollar.
Jared is saying is it's confusing because Karen Heard made a motion to go to committee, but at the same time she said, don't do a study. So if we're not gonna do a study, what information are we gonna look at?
Part of what he needs to know is, do you want more information?
Right.
Not anymore. I don't think that's the case.
So then, okay.
So we've motioned a second to go to committee. Um I think it would need to define whether you, I think the only thing you would do is the staff would spend more time trying to figure out, are you more streamlined or your salaries different? You know, more recalculate the fee study. Otherwise, I don't know, we'd need more parameters for what we're gonna look at.
Can I ask one more question? So at this juncture, we are a buck seventy-five behind the eight ball with your number, right? Because we went up two and the number was three seventy-five a year ago. It got more streamlined, the prices went up. So we're still, even if we held steady at three seventy-five, we went up two bucks. We're a buck seventy-five behind the eight ball currently, right?
Except you have to separate the service charges, something that the village charges, the actual garbage rates or something the company charges and that we just have to, they just have to go up because that's what the company is charging us. So this is something that we added on to the bill. The garbage rates are going up.
Right.
Waste Management's gonna charge us more, that has to be passed on to the residents. I mean, we, we already just loaded, that's gonna happen. That's whether we're charging them, right? Cause it's taking more of our time. Jared says it's taking less of our time, we shouldn't be charging this much.
No, that's not what I said.
No.
I thought you said you were more streamlined.
I said we are more streamlined, I didn't say it was cheaper.
Yes.
So Polaris, when I say we're more streamlined, what is more streamlined now versus July uh first twenty twenty?
Right.
Is we had, we're coarse then and today we have Polaris. So it is absolutely more streamlined. Our billing software does make our job easier. Absolutely, it's making it easier.
Right.
But there's still significant amount of calls.
There's still, there's still a significant amount of calls and the costs for everything else go up as well because our power and utilities in this building, our health insurance for our staff has gone up. We gave raises last year that went up that, um honestly, we needed to. But everything we've touched also goes up. Um so I, we are more streamlined, but we also, we're already behind and our costs are going up as well. Um, yeah.
The administrative for advanced disposal or whomever you have your service through is gonna be going up for those same reasons. So just because we're pushing the admin part of it through the village, doesn't mean that that dollar seventy-five won't go up either?
I'm a hundred dollars a quarter for every other week pickup for Waste Management right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so with-
And I don't have recycling. I'd have, in relation in Eau Claire.
So if we're, sorry.
Cause I don't know, I don't know if we can-
Um so.
I don't know if we did anything out of, out of a committee.
Yeah, we can go through with that motion and um, we can vote on it or not and then we can start with a new motion or not, turn, no motion at all, but.
I got it.
So we got a motion on the table to ta, well, a motion on the table to push this to committee um do more research on it. Any further discussion on that motion?
Are they gonna have them rerun the numbers on it to have new numbers for the committee?
It'd be up to the committee.
Without new numbers, I think committee meeting is useless.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. Uh, we've heard these comments before, I think we're gonna go in for a motion here. All in favor of putting this to committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, the nays have it. So we're still on this uh service rate charge, uh we don't do anything, it's still the same? Or anybody have anything to be a motion or comment here?
Motion to increase the admin fee by a dollar seventy-five.
So we have a motion to go from the jump, from two that it was, up to the three seventy-five that was recommended last year.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions on that?[1758.82]
I hate paying for garbage.
Certainly.
Pretty nasty if you didn't get it.
Not in all.
And this is a per month?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there any way, you know, Renee, like how we, you know, when we, when we started talking about taxes and everybody, you know, taxes go up and whatever, and we had that visual on the website that showed, yep, taxes go up, but you're paying, you know, we have CBTC and we have county taxes, state taxes, school taxes, and we showed the visual of that. Is there any, not that we would use that same type of visual, but is there anything to help the consumer understand that, you know, we can't just rob Peter to pay Paul and take the general fund to pay for the four hundred and fifty users, that it has, um, I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's something we could work on to help understand that breakdown other than when they get the bill or perhaps look at the newsletter.
I wonder if there's a way we could scrub that. So we put together a boothmaid study this last year that showed where we were at in our tax liability, where we were at in our sewer, where we were at in our water, what the cost of living to the village was, and how it compared to every municipality in a basket that was around our size in our surrounding counties.
Yes, the baskets.
Yeah. We didn't publish that on purpose because we weren't trying to throw Augusta or Osseo or, you know, any of the other municipalities that are in our same basket, under the bus by saying, and I don't even remember who was the most expensive, but you know, don't live in.
It wasn't us.
Yeah, yeah. Don't, don't live in X, they're the most expensive. We weren't trying to throw them under the bus, but we were like number three, I think it was, as far as when you can, when you compared it all the way down the line, I think it was, we were definitely in the lower third. I might not be three.
Favorable. Number three, not high, it's most expensive, but the most favorable.
The most favorable overall cost of living. I wonder if there's a way we could put, and maybe this something Renee and I ought to work on, a sanitized version of that, that in similar sized municipalities, we are the, we're the tenth, fifth, you know, we're we're five out of twenty.
Yes.
In a recent survey or something that says, what our cost of living for the village of Fall Creek is. I wonder if we could.
Could you, is there a way that you could broadcast that information to the iPad so that the trustees could have that information?
Can send that out on email or?
Yeah. Could you, could you call it town A, town B?
Well, you, I've seen the data. I've seen the data. I think you probably.
Well, yeah, but I mean to push it out.
The problem with that is then.
They're gonna ask what's A, B, C, yeah.
I don't think it's a public consumption. What he's saying is, it's not really.
Well, really, it wouldn't be town necessarily, it would be hauler. Like, it wouldn't be the carrier, like, if you have, which you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to say, it's veal, we are, we're, you know, but like.
No, cause that was a, that was an entire services, that was tax, that was water, that was sewer. That was what it costs a resident to live in the village of Fall Creek.
Yeah, that's true. I don't, just food for thought. That way, I just think having, looking right at it, and obviously, it's hard to make these decisions on, I don't wanna pay anymore for anything. But when, you know, the seven of us sit here and we look at the, you know, sometimes it's, oh, you know, I didn't realize, you know. So if there is something that people could actually see the why and the how and the.
Except if we're gonna be absolutely honest, and we tell them, we can't say your surcharge is going up because your garbage bill's going up. The surcharge is going up because we, we've decided we're gonna make it go up and we're doing the same amount of work, or basically.
But we also should have raised it up to three seventy-five a year ago.
Then, so then that's what we would have to say. Well, we would have to say, guys, we should have had it there whenever this was decided two years ago or whenever this contract was put through. It should have been three seventy-five and now we're paying catch up, and so now we're gonna go ahead and raise it to that. That's what we should do. We need to tell them the truth and be transparent, and not just say, well, you know, everything's going up and so we're going up too. It has to be very truthful.
Right. The the facts. Fact of the matter is, it costs three seventy-five.
Yeah.
You know.
We're a buck seventy-five short.
It cost that before.
And we've been subsidizing you for two years.
Yeah.
Right.
We have.
That's the.
People have been, people have been, the general fund has been subsidizing the crap or garbage fund.
I know what you mean.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
People have been subsidizing themselves for most of, most of the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion for a monthly village surcharge down there to administer garbage from two dollars to three seventy-five.
Yes.
Motion in a second. I think we had on that. So you have that, Renee?
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I guess my comment was, I don't know, I I kinda liked the consistent incremental approach, but.
Oh, versus three seventy-five?
Making it right, yeah. Making it right to fine too, I guess, but.
Well, you don't have to bite out the whole thing at once, but you do have to move in that direction.
Yeah, that's why I kinda liked myself. So I'm just explaining myself, my thinking on it, so.
Maybe another dollar.
Well, next year's gonna be another seventy-five cents, and the year after, it's gonna be another seventy-five cents, and it's gonna be constant catch up.
You. But then, when are you gonna review it? You gonna wait another year to review it? And so there's kind of a give or take there, so either way, but.
It'd be nice if next year you didn't have to do any, right?
Well, the, the hope is, like I had said to Ryan, you know, my motion would have been originally, just to raise it a dollar and then look at, are, you know, are we, do we really need to be three seventy-five? Do we need to be higher or a little lower? Have we streamlined some stuff? I mean, we could have done that. The motion is now a dollar seventy-five. Hopefully, next year, we don't have to raise it again because we're we're now meeting the metrics of paying for it, the the administration part of it.
Well, and and maybe next year, before we get to this point, you run that, the survey, have them do their time study.
Right.
And then you'll have, and then at that point, we can always go backwards if we're the wrong way.
Yeah, I I guess I'd kinda like the incremental, but because it gives you that margin to say, our rate study might be a little out of date, but things have changed, but we're still lower than the three seventy-five.
We are gonna be, our garbage service is gonna be lower with the administration bump and the garbage bump to probably most of the other communities.
Yeah, it'll be, I, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, but if I voted a certain way and you guys were wondering why I was voting, I just wanna make.
So what's on the table right now?
So on the table's three seventy-five. And any other comments or questions? Alright. Seen that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Rapp?
Uh, no.
Halesworth?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
No.
Hurd?
No.
Cott?
Yes.
Okay. So three no's, four, yeah, four no's, three yes. One more time, add it.
Fine, I'll make the motion that we increase by a dollar.
Sausage.
Whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further comments or questions?
Yes, cause I'm still struggling with, I know that this was instituted a long time, well, however, whenever we got the garbage contract. But is it something that I'm struggling, should we even have passed on the costs in the first, and I mean, everybody can say, well, yeah, 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 I get that. But I am, I am struggling with whether we should have just, we just do with the work because we are the servants of the public, and we just do the work. And the work means that, you know, they had to spend more hours or whatever to the tune of three dollars and seventy-five cents per resident or per garbage user per month or whatever, per quarter, whatever it turned out to be, but I just.
I think we've talked about the utility enterprise funds and.
Yeah, and I understand it. I totally get that. And I, and I also mentioned that, you know, in the past, we've taken our revenue over expenditures and put it into our enterprise funds to help with, offset the sewer costs that we haven't been able to fund and, and just trying to look at a way. We actually put it into capital projects. I just want to correct you on that. I'm sorry, Ron? I just wanna correct you on that. The excess revenues over expenditures goes to capital projects, not enterprise fund. Oh, capital projects, but there was some, I've seen it in the minutes, something was moved to the sewer fund in the past. We were doing the debt service, helping with the.
There was a debt.
It was a debts, yeah.
They had to help the debt pay off.
A debt payoff, yeah. And I know we're not, that's the reference I'm using.
So that was.
I just wanted to correct you because I don't wanna have it. Yeah, I do, I do want it to be corrected. So I wanna make those proper terms. I know that we were moving money into a debt then.
But but that was a symptom of what Chester was talking about, kicking the ball down and not doing anything. And so for a number of years, you had to prop it back up. So motion in a second to go from two dollars to three dollars. Any other comments, questions? Alright, seen none, move into a roll call vote.
Rapp?
Yes.
Halesworth?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Hurd?
No.
Cott?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Okay, we go back.
Tim, before you go on, the next thing, just so you guys are aware, there's a radar indicated tornado in Durant and a confirmed tornado in Colfax right now, so. Not to, just, just be diligent, look up a radar and keep your eye on that.
Yeah.
We're in a cement building, we're fine.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, I haven't heard sirens yet.
Yeah, we're sorry, but we're gonna write.
That's it.
I like you, but I don't want you to be my last.
Right, I, as much as I like all you, I'm gonna perish if I have somebody else I'd rather perish with.
I'm trying myself to sleep now.
We'll be safe in here.
We're going to, where's what number?
Yeah.
We're going back to twelve?
Yeah, it's not, the storm's probably ten, fifteen minutes away.